Allegions, please.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call, all present? Review and approve agenda for the thirteenth of February. Is there any changes, additions?
No changes or additions for me tonight.
We accept the agenda as written.
Second. We had a motion in a second to approve agenda. All in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, passed all present.
Is the decoy a lot?
The hearing loop?
I don't hear the decoy.
It should, John, is everything activated back there?
I was checking it out here and I don't hear the decoy, but...
Everything should be up and going.
I've got this one that'll help, but decoy is not. Okay, sorry.
No, well, I'll speak up the best I can for you, Vic.
Review and approve minutes from November fourteenth.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We had a motion in a second to approve minutes. All in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, passed all present. Item number four, amendment to plan use unit development. The Way Park Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at City of St., City of Way Park, Nineteen Thirteenth Avenue North, six thirty soon thereafter to hear the recommended, the request of aimed commercial planned unit development to accommodate additional new car dealership. By request of Way Park Building Development Authority, the property is legally described as Lot Two, Block One, Miller Park, Platte Four, vicinity of northeast corner of Second Street and Tenth Avenue South, all in Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Public hearing opened at six thirty-two.
Mr. Jansky, planning commission members, folks in the audience, anyone watching at home. Again, this request is to amend a previously approved planned unit development for what's most commonly known as the Hyundai property at nine hundred Second Street South. The property in question is actually on a part of their parking lot area immediately to the east of the Hyundai dealer. It's proposed for development and construction of a new standalone Genesis dealership upon that eastern portion in the current parking lot area. Improvements and updates to the existing Hyundai dealership are current underway and were previously approved and reviewed by city staff. They are underway with some updates and renovations there. At the time of initial consideration of those updates, it was contemplated whether the addition of the Genesis dealer component would be part of that building or whether require a separate building. Ultimately, they did decide to go forward with a separate building. As the property, given its history, was reviewed and approved as a planned unit development under previous iteration of the ordinance back in two thousand and four. Some of you may have been involved at that time. Later, it was updated in two thousand and twelve to allow for addition of a car wash with the Hyundai dealer. We determined that an amendment to the existing planning and development would be required to accommodate the request. The proposed building is approximately nine thousand one hundred, or excuse me, nine thousand eighteen square feet on two stories. I'm just gonna scroll down here and get that on screen for everybody. You see the proposed building in this vicinity on the right side of the screen. Four thousand four hundred twenty-seven square feet would be allocated to sales showroom office space and there would be three associated service stalls on the southern side of the building. The proposal does comply with applicable setbacks and exceeds the parking requirements for both the property, if you consider it on its own, and when considered in totality with the existing Hyundai dealership immediately adjacent. You can see there the, kind of the floor plan layout of the property and the draft elevations. Proposed materials and general exterior treatments do comply with the ordinance. It's a sharp-looking building. Project narrative and information prepared by applicant was included for review and consideration. I've got some of it up on the screen here. As you can see, they did a very thorough and very helpful, excellent job with their information. I would use this as a kind of a standard. I'd like to see all submissions come in with, to be honest. Excellent design, excellent information. Proposal has been reviewed for ordinance compliance and generally appears to comply with all applicable city requirements, although our formal review and comments and any necessary changes would be reviewed and made at time of application for building permit. That's when they would get into the specifics of building code, aspects that would be standard, whether any sort of amendment for planning unit development or not are required. Due to the frontage on the property on State Highway twenty-three and potential consideration of a relocation of the existing curb cut and driveway approach to the allocation further, more centrally located to both sites, the request has been forwarded to MINDOT staff for their review and comment. I've not received anything back as of yet, but anything received will be forwarded back to the applicants and incorporated as part of any finalizing resolution with the city council, assuming a go-ahead from this body. I have not received any comments or concerns regarding the request as of immediately before this meeting. I am supportive of the request and recommend approval with the following conditions. Very basic, but basically, number one, all applicable previous conditions of the initial two thousand and four planned unit development approval and subsequent two thousand and twelve planned unit development amendment shall continue to apply. And number two, any closure, relocation, or addition of curb openings fronting Highway twenty-three are subject to review and approval from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Those couple recommendations being included, I think otherwise it looks like a very good addition for this area and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, John. This is a public hearing. If anybody wants to come up to the podium, state your name and make your comments, please.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Lindahl, the architect who made the application in behalf of the Way Park Building and Development Company.
Excuse me, is your microphone on, please? If we have a green light on it.
Right side of the base.
Where is the switch?
Down in the base.
Right by the base of it. Is this a... Okay.
Might have to lift it up a little bit.
I guess I need to eat the mic, so, anyway. So, just a little background, you know, I could spend all night reading this to you, but I think you could do that on your own leisure if you needed to take a nap. One of the, the main emphasis, the reason for this project is because, as you, as John had mentioned across the street, where actually next door to this proposed project is, you know, the Hyundai project, which is going through a major renovation. Part of the requirements is that Hyundai does not allow to be dueled with any other manufacturer. Genesis, even though it originated from Hyundai, they don't like each other, so they have to actually have separate dealerships. So, this is actually kind of a spin-off of what the requirements for the Hyundai improvement. And so, I mean, and one of the interesting things too, from standpoint of this location, it is the one of two Genesis dealerships in Minnesota and the likelihood of any others coming into Minnesota is pretty, well, the possibility of that is very, very small. So, I think it's gonna be a great benefit. It's actually, they're taking obviously some of the service and also sales operations that are currently in the Hyundai store and it will be moving them over into the Genesis. And obviously, the design of the building, I can't take credit for that because that is actually the prototype for the Genesis dealership. You know, it's gonna be a rather striking building with the glass and the panels and kind of interesting some of the interior design, but it's very high-end and that's obviously what they want to do is to bring in those type of customers, you know, in, not only into the dealership, but also into the city. I think from the standpoint of all the requirements, you know, we're not reducing, actually reducing the amount of impervious surface with this because there's gonna be some additional landscaping around the building. So, actually, the amount of, the percentage of impervious is decreased with this. And so, I guess I'm open up to any questions that you may have and hopefully I'll be able to answer those.
Is Genesis strictly all-electric vehicle or are they not?
No, no, they're, they're like a lot of them, and of course, that whole electrical, electric vehicles kind of, you know, you hear a lot of stories about that. But this project will have three service bays and they identify those as EV labs. There's not service bays, but there are labs, so. But any other mechanical kind of work in that would be, happen over in the Hyundai store. They will allow them to do that, but from standpoint of service and, excuse me, sales, they totally want them separate.
Are you the architect for the building?
Yes, yes.
I have two questions for you. One of them is, are you planning to meet all of the ADA and Minnesota State Building requirements?
Yes.
Because I would insert that as a condition for approval, that those conditions are met. My other, my other point here is that the Second Street corridor does not allow overhead doors to face Second Street. That's part of the overhead, that's part of the Second Street corridor. It appears that we've not paid attention to that in the past, but we did insert that for Toyota. When they built their building, their overhead doors were on Second Street, they backed them off to the west side of the building. But the Second Street corridor plan does not permit overhead doors on Second Street. And if city staff doesn't know that that's, that's part of the Second Street corridor, I researched that when St. Cloud Toyota came to us. So, those are the two things I'm most concerned about. I'm looking forward to having the dealership here. It looks great.
Well, I think as part of the planning and development, you know, that, that allows for variation from the standards when that was done in the first place. So, I don't have an issue with allowing that proposal as outlined.
I just wanted to point out, when St. Cloud Toyota came in, we were very adamant about that and they moved their willingly, moved their overhead doors to the west. Now, we're talking about putting more overhead doors on Second Street, which is not part, which is not permitted in the Second Street corridor. And I don't hear anybody talking about any kind of a variance on that. It's just not allowed in the Second Street corridor.
Does Hyundai have doors facing Second Street now?
Yeah, there currently are two service bays, not service bays, but the service reception. What a...
And I'm also, I'm also really concerned that we make sure we have the ADA and building code requirements.
Right, and that, obviously, that's required in order to get a building permit.
I don't think that should be covered here, though, Vic. That's, that's for the building permit people.
Yeah, those, those apply regardless of whether this, this request has to come to this body or not, so.
That, from the standpoint, obviously, I know from the overhead doors, you know, that is actually for the customer and it's actually gonna be full glass. And so, and it's, but it's not shown in these, the drawings, but actually, it's, it's a glass that has a tint on it. So, it's gonna be high, you know, and the, the frame on the glass, or excuse me, on the door is going to be, you know, a black anodized rather than the typical aluminum-type frame. So, I mean, they're treating it a little bit different, but I understand your point.
Mr. Lindahl, is the intent of those particular doors, is that for display that, or is that service?
That is for service reception.
Okay.
Most of the automotive industry, I know that we have certain situations where if you're on a corner lot, you have opportunity of manipulating those things. This one here, obviously, is a very compact building and it's in, and obviously, to, you know, to try to configure, you know, we have an issue with as far as with Genesis. I think most manufacturers, I should say all manufacturers, require that the service reception be created and treated equally to the showroom as far as sales customer and a service customer. And so, that's why all of them, if you look at all the manufacturers, their standard prototype is having the service reception doors, you know, street-facing so that when customers drive in, they're not having to look around, where do I take my vehicle for service? It's right there, but I do understand your position, you know, as far as that situation, but...
And my assumption would be that, you know, this is a little different animal as far as the, you know, the glass and the design than, than a roll-up door that you'd see on a more standard-type building.
Right, I mean, there's not gonna be any solid panels. It'll all be glass and aluminum. So, in essence, you know, it looks like, just like a storefront, but, you know, it does have the opportunity of, you know, moving up and down.
I'm curious as to the parking, I assume, right now, without the second building, that you have more than enough parking between the two, the two lots. With some of the, it looks like you already are meeting the code on the number of spaces, but with the amount of inventory that the dealership carries, is it gonna be tight that between customer parking and inventory that it's gonna be a little bit more crowded than it has been?
Well, the customer parking as well as employee parking are designated and with inventory, it fluctuates throughout the year.
Sure.
Now, what you see over there is obviously you see Hyundai as well as Genesis inventory. So, you know, in essence, we're, we're taking the same operation and keeping it all on the same site. You know, we meet the requirements, obviously, from the city standpoint, but also from the manufacturer, because that was one of the things that, you know, when we presented this concept to them, they look at that. Do you have enough square footage as far as acreage on your individual lots? And obviously, from a plating standpoint, they're two separate parcels. So, they're treating, so the manufacturers are treating them as two separate parcels. And they look at it and says, okay, the Hyundai meets Hyundai's requirement, Genesis meets Genesis requirements.
Great. My second question and final. You know, it's well-known that we have a shortage of EV charging stations and I noticed that in your, in your plan, there's gonna be two.
Yes.
Are those gonna be open to the public, that if, if the charging station is compatible, that somebody could just pull in and pay a fee?
Right, if you've got a credit card, if you've got a credit card, yes, right. Yeah, you know, you're seeing, you're seeing a lot of them now, obviously, there's, you know, there was that whole thing as far as the, you know, the plugs, you know, be able, but yeah, I think...
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, if anybody wants to charge.
It depends on the vehicle, but yeah.
Right.
Tesla wouldn't.
Right, right, if they were, if they fit, I mean, as far as the plug fit.
Assuming the adapter was compatible.
Right. Okay, well, but that's, I mean, but you wouldn't, I mean, if somebody had a credit card, I probably wouldn't deny him a payment, but anyway, that's, I guess that hasn't been quite discussed.
I've got one question, probably be addressed to John. It's something that I'm looking to in the future. I see an area there allocated for storage of batteries. These new batteries and, and some of the issues they've had with them, is that something that has to be, is gonna have to be extra secure and so on and so forth for the sake of, of problems with them, do you think, or is it?
I can't say. That's a little bit outside my purview. I know that, from what I understand, I know that there's, you know, if there's not already, there's kind of more forthcoming best practices as far as how those are handled and probably some building code and fire, fire code updates as far as, you know, EVs in particular, just due to the size and scope of batteries, but I can't say at any level of certainty or authority, but something, you know.
I'm sure it's gonna be coming.
It's coming down the pipe.
Right. Yeah, currently, the electrical code, or excuse me, the fire code does not specifically address, you know, the EV batteries as far as storage. It's rather lax right now, but you are seeing some movement in that direction. That's one of the reasons why, rather than having it in a building, having it outside is part of the trash culture and that's only for a, you know, if you say damage or inoperable battery. I mean, they're not gonna be storing batteries other than storing it until, you know, the truck comes, the parts truck comes and hauls it away. But just for, like, knowing kind of like John mentioned where things are going, it's better to try to isolate it rather than trying to incorporate it into the building.
And that wouldn't be unique for, for this dealer only, you know, as other dealers, other brands incorporate those things. We'll probably see the same, you know, sort of separation. It's just, it just is kind of good sense, you know, the... I mean, it's kind of similar in vein to like a propane tank, you know, you don't want your big propane tank inside your building. You want it separated and surrounded by bollards and stuff like that to give some separation.
Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
One sec, okay.
Got a motion in a second, close public hearing. All in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Will they be able to close at six fifty-two?
Mr. Chairman, I think with the thoroughness of the details that have been presented to us, I would be willing to make a motion for approval of the updated conditional use permit with the applicable conditions that the staff has recommended, those two.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve with conditions. All in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, passed with all present.
I too would like to say thank you for a very thorough report. You laid everything out and if you read it, you know what's going on and it was very, very well done. Thank you.
John, is there any other business?
No, no official business. I do have a, just a quick update though, when that's ready. Just to expect, we are anticipating having a, a meeting for March, likely, at least one, probably two applications coming in. Can't share details yet, but we expect they'll come in probably within the next few weeks. And with the, we do not need to move our March meeting. Sometimes we do in an election year with the primary, but we shouldn't need to move the meeting for March at all.
Probably be moved to twelfth.
Let me check the calendar. It should be...
Yeah, that's, that's what I have, March twelfth.
Yep, that's correct. The, the primary would be on the fifth, so. If anything changes, I'll, I'll let you know, but we can, you can plan on having a March twelfth meeting as of now.
One quick question, we can do it afterwards. I saw it read in the paper where the state is wanting to, I think the pressure is on from the cities, but the state is considering relaxing the parking requirements for various things, especially apartment units. Their reasoning was that it would be, it would save the renters money because that much parking space, that much parking area wouldn't be needed. That was the impetus for it, but they are considering easing up on the parking requirements, especially for residential complexes. And I was wondering if that's something that I think would be incorporated or...
It's, it's on our radar. It's, it's something that's been gaining traction sometimes and throughout the country. It's been implemented in some cities. I want to say either Minneapolis or St. Paul, I don't recall which, has already eliminated having any sort of parking minimums, kind of letting the, the market dictate that. But the proposal from the legislature is, would be the first statewide mandate that would end any sort of parking minimum. It's something we're monitoring. That's, obviously, we'd have some concerns with that. The vast majority of time, development provides enough parking for its, for its own accord without a lot of extra push from the city or requirements, but there are situations where it could be problematic for us as well as other cities. Generally, I'm not a big fan of the state dictating and preempting local ordinances as far as planning and zoning, you know, basically, I'd rather let every city decide for themselves what works for them, because, you know, what works for one doesn't necessarily work for another. But it's something we're keeping an eye on. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but we'll just kind of keep that ears to the rail and see where it goes.
It kind of surprised me that they'd go from the residential standpoint because you take a larger apartment complex, it would seem to me it would be pretty cut and dried how many parking places they're gonna need. I mean, they know. I would think you could ease up on the requirements at a, on a commercial, on the commercial end before you would on the residential end, I mean, that, as I see it. You'd have less, less problems easing up on the commercial requirements and then...
I, I think, I think it's partially for, intended for, you know, as part of that, that housing aspect. They're, they're trying to see, you know, what, what options they have or what can reduce the burden for, for development, for housing in particular. But that's, just doing that won't fix those problems. It's, that was something that's maybe, it's well-intentioned certainly, but it, it, it's, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around. I know we have a site in town that I've been working with that's come up for lease and we, we've had a few of those before where they have very, very few parking stalls on, on their own property, so they, they basically have to rely on a quirk in the ordinance that allows you to secure stalls from a neighbor. But if the neighbor doesn't want to, or if that changes hands and they decide they don't want to keep that agreement after some years, what do they do? You know, so it's, it's always best to have those, those numbers if you can. And, you know, we, we've seen requests in the past to vary from those and generally, they, they work okay, but I'm, I'm not a fan of just letting, letting them say, no, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to.
They said they were doing it for, on the basis of trying to make it more economical for the people living there and so on and so forth. I can't imagine eliminating a few parking places could have much effect on the renters and the big company.
I don't, I don't know the numbers well enough to know if it makes a substantial dent or not. But I suspect it's, it's an easy thing to grasp at, you know, if you, if you... Utilities and infrastructure and building materials have a set cost. If you're, if you're, and those keep going up and up and up and don't tend to come back down ever. So, if you, if you're able to take some off the other end, maybe it eases that a little bit. And there are cases where maybe, you know, if they're... And there are cases where maybe, you know, if they're, if they're located at a transit hub or somewhere with a really robust, you know, the transit or bus or light rail or somewhere where it's very walkable with everything nearby, maybe there's times where that makes sense.
Or for the affordable housing, they're trying to make it, the apartment could be bigger with fewer spots and try to get rent down. It's so it's cheaper to build and is what they're, I think they were trying to go at, but.
Yeah, and, and like I said, that, that movement's been kind of gaining momentum. It's throughout the country to some degree. There's, there are some larger cities that have ended parking minimums. I know even some, some stores like Walmart, you know, who typically have a sea of parking. You know, they've stopped building stores with so much parking. They, they meet the, the minimums that they'll, they'll get rid of a couple hundred stalls if they just don't use them except for maybe a peak day a year. So I, I see the justification in that. If it's, if it's only being used, you know, but once a year maybe, is, is there really a need for that much excess? But that's, that's kind of privately held too. That's, that's people that typically go above and beyond for their customers that are saying, oh, maybe we don't, don't need to use all that. It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of dynamic. There's a, there's a number of things that are in the legislature right now that, that we're, we're kind of monitoring. And we do that, you know, as it goes on, sometimes we, sometimes the city may, may take an official stance on it at some point. Sometimes we don't. It's just a matter of, you know, how, how far it's getting and what's the, what's the expectation it's gonna get any traction? That's, that's, that's what, with any legislative, you know, session, we, we have to kind of monitor those things and keep an eye on them.
Legislators like to raise something up that helps them out in some way. Too often.
Nothing else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So second.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned seven oh one. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.